Grand Fork City Council to order. And the first item of business will be the adoption of the agenda. And I have a motion to adopt the May 11th regular meeting agenda. Counselor Krog, Counselor Moslin, all those in favor? And the minutes of April the 20th. And I have a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of April the 20th. Counselor Corlick, second by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor?
Business arising?
Business arising. Counselor Moslin, or Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this was a discussion that went around in circles. So Agenda page 768. Council requests Boundary Family Services to establish, to initiate a Wellness Committee meeting. And then we were talking about no terms of reference and whatnot. What meetings met? And do we have a different group out there? And what's their mandate?
Well, actually, in the committee, or in the council report, Counselor Moslin has a separate section there that he's going to respond to. So we can wait for that. I think we'll get an explanation of where things are at from Counselor Moslin. Unless Counselor Moslin, you would like to clarify that matter now?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Your Worship. Somehow Counselor, Mr. Pratt decided that we should just call Social Services Advisory Group meeting. And that is a good, what did happen? And has led to the discussions and my report and motions. Anyhow, so and everybody did come. It was a well-attended meeting. Thank you.
Should that minute be amended to the group that's in group that met?
Well, at the time, that was the correct information. So I think that can stay the same at this point. We learn more later on. Yeah. Through your worship. Mr. Redford, is it necessary to correct those minutes?
No, no, it'll get, for the minutes, it'll be corrected when Counselor Moslin speaks to it and indicates that it was a SAG, not a wellness. So I think we're okay.
Okay. Counselor Corlick, add your hand up for a minute there.
No, I was scratching a butt bite.
God, just, we are speaking to the veracity of the minutes. And at the time, the motion was to the Wellness Committee. It never turned out to be any such thing as a Wellness Committee. And it became a social service. But to the ver, the minutes are correct that way.
Okay, so we'll get clarification in your report? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings us immediately into the reports from counselors. And can I go around the square that I've got here and start with Counselor Corlick?
Sure.
And Counselor, this would be a regional district as well. You might as well couple them together.
Well, I'll start with Regional District then, because Rowley did my report. So I don't have to do it. He hit on all the high points and the important things I thought that should be brought to council regarding transit and frills and the delays there have been. And hopefully, we can overcome those in the next little while. Basically, he hit on those highlights. So and so that would be my Regional District report. And it seems funny that you could have such a short report when we're in hours of meetings just as well as this. So yeah, but he did hit on highlights. So I'm just going to begin with that. And then to just go into council report, I did attend the Grand Fork Economic Development Advisory Committee. And that was interesting, seeing the work that the Chamber and the Community Futures and everybody's putting in to get us through what we're doing now with COVID-19 and where we're going to go and move forward with it. And Larry Olson from the government was there. And there was quite a variety of people. And the most important things, I think, were questions in the roundtable about how the pandemic has impacted businesses or organizations? And are the recommendations for economic development activities projects that would be of benefit? And things like that. So I think that they address something who, of course, everybody has concerns. We don't know exactly how things are going to go and where, how we're going to move forward through all this and to ensure that that is a positive, positive effect that's going to happen. And I'm happy to hear that Intubore is running. That's great. Because they are actually classified as an essential service, which was that, that's interesting to me. Oh, one thing that did count through, which I, Celgar in Casa Guard was asking for Regional District support in reducing stumpage fees for them because getting pulp, so getting wood for pulp is getting too pricey. And I do agree with that, because I think that it's just not Celgar that's struggling with stumpage fees. It's, it would be Intubore and it would be all the other mills that are in there. So it's just not a one, one mill that, you know, to benefit from over-stumpage fees. I think it's a general thing. And it did not gather any support at Regional District back from West Oak. But that was interesting. Let me see. Yeah, so I guess we talked about communicating. And I did compliment both the mayor and Rowley Russell for their ongoing YouTube presentations. And I looked and I see that there's not a lot of people that are watching or listening to them, or maybe they're just not saying they like it. But I, I think it's a good thing that you're doing that. So thank you. I think that's important to talk, just talk about what's going on in our communities. And that the fact that both Regional District and the city are working together on those presentations, I think that's commendable. And then we went on to talk about the main role of RDKB to all this is to figure out what the gaps are and how to fill those gaps with the COVID-19 and response to that. And that there is a need for coordinated messaging. And I think that that is happening to the best of our abilities. Because the message changes about every day. Yeah, so I think, and how do we position ourselves, whether we cover recovery and minimize the amount, the amount of recovery we have to do? And how to avoid stress by communicating and talking about things and updating? So there, we're hearing a lot about that. And I think that's important to continue where we're going and stay with that positive attitude towards things and, you know, work the best we can. And I think the staff and council and Regional District, I think, we're all trying to figure it out and follow, follow the guidelines and go forward in a positive, supportive manner. And there was one thing that you did say this morning, Mr. Mayor, about where's council? Well, you know, we're busy. And the fact that I'm out and about, I talk to people all the time. It may not be all the same people, and it's certainly not necessarily on radio or TV or anything. But I do the best I can with, you know, aging and our two-meter social distancing. And it's, it, people are really adhering to that. And I think that's, that's important, and I appreciate it. We also talked about this Community Futures activities in response to COVID. They are working really hard in supporting the businesses. And they're certainly participating in the Chamber and the Business Roundtable locally and regionally. So I think cohesively, we have a community that is working together, provide the best that we can. And I, I think that's, I appreciate that. And I, I do believe that we can go forward. And Economic Development Workplace Update. Consultants have been contracted, developed a community profile. And this will replace a profile found on the city website. The intent is to link the profile to appropriate cities such as City ID and RDKB and Chamber, Discovery House. And the target for completion was June 30th. However, things have been delayed a little bit because of other emerging issues. So, you know, I think, I think it, things are going forward. But we also, at that meeting, where was a discussion on Gistel Consultants about Aladdin's in Detroit and researching what is currently available to avoid duplication. And I think that's another important thing, not to duplicate messages, but to be cohesive and present things as a whole and easily understandable and so people can get the message. I think that's totally important. I don't know, there's something else to look for. So that was the Economic Development Advisory Committee that I went to and that was interesting. And then heard it's about the Mountain Museum, who is closed to the public, but are still working to develop programming. So when they are open, they will be ready for the public and welcome with all that to the museum. It, they have been putting together outreach kits for students and seniors in our community to support engaging interaction with the past. So, you know, they're quietly working to move forward when the restrictions are lifted or just changed, you know? There's everybody. I don't think there is a group that isn't working towards the next steps. Because it's going to be so important for our community to keep moving forward and evolving that issue. So I think, I think everybody's working towards that. And that, that's it for me. I have pages and pages of notes, but nobody wants to hear those. We're done.
And Counselor Studley?
Nothing really important at this point. I just, everybody, don't be afraid to go and go shopping and support these small businesses. Of course, be cautious, be safe, be respectful when you are shopping. But definitely don't be afraid to go over there and support those businesses. Lots of restaurants are still open, some fast food to be delivered to. Actually, kind of handy and neat, it's almost just like going to a fast food restaurant. Just fall ahead, you just drive up to that restaurant of your choice, grab your food, it's crowded. So it's actually very, very handy, very convenient, very safe. So please support all small businesses.
Thank you, Counselor Studley. And Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even though we've got quite a few big things on the agenda today, I might as well throw another one. Take this opportunity to start the conversation now, be made. I was hoping that we could, that we, City Council could request a report from Boundary Family Social Services on the Army Center. What, what went well, what didn't go well, how many people we served? And so we're not in a bind. In a few months, what are we going to do this winter? Let's start it now. We don't want, we want to do better than we did in the past. So I, I hope that we can get reports from Boundary Family Services on some of those issues so that we can craft the service or at least have some idea of what kind of service we need in the community and how to support that. But let's do the conversation now, not at the 11:59.
Agreed. Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Thompson picking up on the theme. You're muted.
Not anymore. The, one of the meetings that I did attend was the SAG meeting on the 29th of April. And that included a number of people. But I think it was the Wellness Committee that kind of morphed into a SAG meeting. My understanding is the Wellness Committee was something that had been developed and put together previously. But I, I think it just didn't go anywhere from what I gathered. So the, the issue of the report that, as requested by Counselor Zalinski, the SAG is meeting again on Wednesday. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Moslin, perhaps we could add that to the agenda for consideration? I attended the Freshman Update meeting first, and that was always, has always been informative. I also attended a meeting about CAT. I remember the harm reduction color, but now they've joined them all together. There weren't as many people at the meeting as I had thought there and I hoped that they're right. But they do move me forward. We are reaching for to, obviously, our next meeting date for June the, June the 4th. And is there anything that council like me has written for to that meeting? I would be happy to do that. I also, through Zoom, attended the Virtual Town Hall, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. And again, there was, there was good turnout for that and some good information was shared. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Your Worship. And thank you, Counselor Zalinski and Counselor Thompson. I, in fact, part of my report was going to be asking council for suggestions for the agenda for this week's SAG meeting. Anyhow, I do have a report. Hold on, you'll remember.
You had two, like you first.
Maybe from there, again, I've got two reports of company. Okay, this is my, my report. And, you know, Counselor Corlick was correct. We have been busy. And Zoom has really made it busy. I've had several Zoom meetings since the last council meeting. The first one was on April 21st, when I met with Duncan Redford, which was a chance to get to know Duncan a little better. I'm looking forward to his leadership, bringing council focus and decisions to bear the challenges we face. Then there was a Social Services Advisory Group meeting on April 29th. This was the first Zoom meeting of this community group, but they had had previous Zoom meetings by that time. A great deal of the meeting heard was from the table members reporting on the impact of COVID-19 on the services and their adjustments to new reality of dealing with people during the pandemic. I did forward, share those minutes with council, although they are draft minutes. The next meeting of this advisory group is this Wednesday. And as a secretary, I would like to ask council if there's a topic you would like to group to consider. And I certainly heard from Counselor Zalinski, Counselor Thompson, we'd like to hear an update from Boundary Family Support Services on their plans and the results of the shelter that they sponsored this last winter. I also could, another Zoom meeting was the Freshet Conditions for Elected Officials. It was on May 1st. And I'm going to, this was council's first glimpse of a response plan that was drafted in Jim 2019. Every year is going to be a different chapter for this plan as it is home to our landmarks and our community's uniqueness. At the workshop, a wide background of data sources was presented on May 1st. And indeed, as we have just seen, there is a prediction of no flooding, no major flooding this year. City park has remained dry unlike 2017, 2018. Incidentally, Tiger Dams and Askel Pins for potential emergency application have been ready at City Works, as most of the public knows. It will remain probably unused for as long as possible so that it can be shipped to another community at a moment's notice. Equipment, I'm looking forward to this, will then be returned for additional training in the summer. I also attended by Zoom a Community COVID-19 Response Meeting. And this meeting was organized by Matthew Cameron of BC Housing. Most other social services providing frontline aid to the homeless or vulnerable populations were at that, at that conference call. I recommended to the meeting, at that, at that meeting, that concerns or requests should come through our CIO. This was fortunately done, and the motions below are the results of that collaboration. It is now up to council to decide on how to proceed. I did attend with Counselor Thompson the Grand Fork Community Action TV on May 7th. And I am learning more and more that we are actually the beneficiaries of more medical assistance, or medical attention anyways, through the COVID pandemic. We are now receiving more psychiatric resources than we ever did previously. Telehealth has finally taken hold. And more professionals and their patients are adopting the new technology. We are learning, perhaps we'll be stronger coming up. I also attended the Regional Chamber of Commerce Town Hall meeting on May 8th. There were concerns of the open eye, among migrant workers, college owners. Nonetheless, throughout, there is a strong support for the government's phased-in approach to reopening our economy. We have almost done the dam, the hammer. Now we're going to have to do the dent with this virus. Anyhow, that's my report, Your Worship. If you want to handle it differently.
Kind of overlapped on your personal report and the resolutions that you're introducing. I wonder if you could hear from Counselor Krog first, and then we'll go back to your two resolutions? Is that what you said? Counselor Krog?
No formal report, just been Zooming and agreeing with Counselors Zalinski that could be put on the agenda for the SAG meeting. The other thing would be, can we get updates from all the other people at the SAG table? If, you know, Whispers is there, we could have an update on the use of the community kitchen. What are the other stakeholders actually doing?
Thank you. I have a few little questions, Counselor Krog. And so back to Counselor Moslin, your two resolutions. Do you want to place the first one in front of council first? And let council direct staff to work with BC Housing and ask wellness?
Yeah, yes, I, Your Worship, just, just to go back though to Counselor Krog's concerns. Counselor, I have tried my best to keep council in the loop. I have, I have distributed minutes of those meetings, which did contain updates from each of the agencies. And I really do agree that it's important to try to keep our fingers on the pulse, if you will. It's kind of a grim analogy.
Yeah, I was, sorry, I wasn't being, saying that we weren't getting the reports. I would just like more information if it's got statistics. Like, we want the amount of people that use the shelter. I'd like to know how many people are using the kitchen. How many, if IHJ or Mental Health knows, how many case files they have? Just so that we get an overall picture of the numbers.
Yeah, you're, thank you, Counselor. And I would definitely do my best to get, put a handle on, because like you, I like numbers too. I know as an old teacher, it's what's counted counts. Anyhow, back to the motions, Your Worship. Much of the discussion that I've been having the past two weeks has been centered around the BC Housing Interior Health Initiative plans to shelter the vulnerable population during the pandemic. This plan, though, breaks into the population, the vulnerable population into five streams. And I'm pretty sure council knows those five streams. Stream one is the sheltered population. While we still have population in shelters, that's the transition. Stream two is the population in those shelters that wishes to shelter independently. And this, this requires basically motel rooms with a minimal of supervision. It could also require RV, RV sites. Stream three is for those of the homeless population who have encountered the pandemic, either personally or been exposed to somebody who have been ordered to shelter in place. And that two, that stream two will provide, will be RVs as our motel rooms in order for that, that stream to shelter. That stream, of course, would need more staffing, because it would have to be, food would have to be brought in and that sort of thing. Stream four is a stream that we don't want. Stream four is, fortunately, hasn't been accounted. Stream four is when you have an extreme number of people with COVID who have to be isolated and quarantined. That would require large spaces like an arena or a curling ring. Those spaces have been requisitioned in other communities in our region, Kamloops, Kelowna, Merritt. Planning is in place. We count our blessings, Your Worship, in that we have not needed that space yet. Stream five is for those who wish to shelter outdoors. And this, of course, is what we are all familiar with. And this is where the whole issue becomes blurry. That is, are we dealing with a COVID initiative? Or are we dealing with the ongoing challenge of dealing with the homeless population? It, I don't know. It's a tough one. Probably only time will help us. Maybe we'll come out stronger. Anyhow, those, that's the five streams. Bog use of ask wellness. And I believe Matthew Cameron met with Duncan, discussed it. And these recommendations, these motions, I would like to propose as a result of that collaboration. Whereas in response to the short-term COVID-19 pandemic and the current provincial orders requiring municipal support for initiatives involving the vulnerable population, council resolves the following. Let council direct staff to work with BC Housing and ask wellness to identify spaces for isolation purposes, including hotel rooms or commercial RV sites. And again, that would be for streams two and three. And that the city's role would strictly be to identify possible lodging opportunities under current locations of unsheltered residents in the community.
Secretary for that motion, please. Counselor Thompson seconded, and opening for discussion. Counselor Moslin, did you want to say anything further before we open the discussion?
Oh, Your Worship, thank you for the time and the place. I handed over to my colleagues to comment. Thank you.
And Counselor Zalinski, and then Counselor Krog?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chris, I think, or Counselor Moslin, I think you answered my question on your first, that council direct. You're saying that's for stream two and three. So the word spaces pairs me. And what I'm thinking of is the open field concept, the ballpark, the whatever. But you're saying that you're only talking about identifying structures, like fixed group accommodations on that motion, is that correct?
Hang on, hang on, Counselor. I'm trying to juggle my screen here.
So it was, stream five was the only one that was random camping fixed up, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be the random camp, camping, right? This is the, this is, you know, for hotel rooms and commercial RV sites. Right, and that's right. Those are the two streams identified with this recommendation. Stream four, of course, which is those who have COVID, would be, you know, and as many of you know, our arena has been identified as a potential spot. That's a bridge that lets hope we never have to cross. But I think the intent is that it's both spaces for isolation purposes, yeah, including hotel rooms or commercial RV sites, not open spaces.
Okay, so I don't know if it's the word spaces or including. I think it's for isolation purposes in hotel rooms or commercial RV. That excludes your curling rink and whatnot, so I guess I'd like to massage those words to make sure that we do not include the open ball field type comment. And I'd like to have my support that you can direct them to a spot. I don't want directing to open fields like the Louvre, per se, so that might be true.
I'd be quite open to them. I was looking, trying to look at the wording. What if I just, to Ask Wellness, to identify hotel rooms or commercial RV sites for isolation purposes? And that gets rid of the word spaces.
That would work for me.
It just changes the word order slightly.
Okay, Councilor Thompson has modified. You're the seconder on that?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. And Councilor Krog had a hand up next?
Can we just make sure we captured that?
Yeah. Does that change?
Just to clarify that we're just striking a sequence of words there. So, let council direct staff to work with B.C. Housing and Ask Wellness to identify hotel rooms or commercial RV sites?
For isolation purposes.
Okay, Councilor Krog.
Thank you. Why are we asking staff to work with Ask Wellness to identify lodging and commercial spaces? Has nothing to do with bylaws, has nothing to do with zoning. All the hotels and motels are all listed. All the commercial RV areas are all listed, so why are we even involved? Isn't that what they're supposed to be doing?
May I add to that? Councilor Maslin, you would like to reform?
Your Worship, I could see that your point comes across. One of the reasons why I think the request is that B.C. Housing and Ask Wellness are both stretched in this task. Matthew Cameron is handling 15 communities for this strategy. You know, Ask Wellness is in four other communities. So although they have tried to put feet on the ground in our town, there's not a great wealth. And that is why they are calling upon city, city staff to help wherever they can to find these places. You know, hope I answered your question.
Councilor, here's a second rebuttal.
Yeah. Okay. Couple of things, they don't even have to be in the community to identify those things. I could identify those things in a web search in 15 minutes. And the fact that they're all stretched in, I don't really care. I care if our staff is all stretched in. They don't need more stuff that other people want us to do. We need to do the stuff that we need to do. And if they want to investigate things, then go for it, do it. But don't take up our staff time, Your Worship.
Through Your Worship, if, maybe I could elaborate on my conversation with Bob and Matt, if that's okay, with your permission, Your Worship?
Me too, I see this in the spirit of cooperation.
Yeah, and quite honestly, this is, this is really not about putting some work on the city. They want to pick our local knowledge of maybe people who have participated in the past or where we know unsheltered residents are. Ask Wellness has somebody on the ground in town that can do all of that work. They're really looking for council's blessing. That's what they're looking for here. They want to make sure the council is in agreement, you know, with finding some of these hotel rooms and commercial sites for people in quarantine. That's really the extent of it. There's really not a lot more than that.
Councilor Zelinski, I see your hand up, but I don't see your question thing, you know?
Yeah, I don't necessarily see why we're doing this either. Usually it's sort of the reverse. Usually somebody would come up with a plan, they'd say, hey, we want to use this city resource. Can the city support us with this resource? Whether it's a ball fair, water land, whether it's whatever. Usually that's sort of the process, is somebody brings that resource to us to take and to use that resource. In this case, the resource is, it's going to be for privately owned things, which are hotels, RV parks, which we don't necessarily have a say in, unless maybe we have areas to accommodate whatever they're friendly. So by referring to that sentence, which is really just up to the hotel owners at this point and RV park owners.
Yeah, I think, you know, to draw your attention to the wording on this, it's work with, not do for. So I think it very much is in the spirit of all the agencies cooperating together. And Councilor Thompson had her hand up, and then Councilor Zelinski again.
I hear the concerns that are being addressed by other members of council. And rather than, and through you, Councilor Maslin, we made the motion. Rather than the council direct staff to work with B.C. Housing, did it preface something to view the fact that council supports B.C. Housing and Ask Wellness in facilities, hotel rooms and commercial RV sites for the purpose of isolation or some effect? If they need the support from the city that would give them the support, it would take the, that is, the concerns of council or of directing staff to do something that doesn't preclude either Matt or Rick Cameron to come in and talk to our staff or contact them. But it just that we wouldn't be giving that kind of direction, just support to the two organizations.
So, in that sort of a change, if there was an opportunity to work with them, we're saying we're not endorsing our staff to work with you? I mean, I think we're playing semantics here and that we're missing the whole purpose of this. The motion was really aimed at whether or not we're going to work as a cohesive community here. B.C. Housing and Ask Wellness are going to be out here trying to help our community. All they're asking at this point in this motion that Councilor Thompson is making is that we work with them.
And I don't have an issue with that. It's just that, it appears that there are some members of council who do have the issue with directing. And what I thought I heard Councilor Maslin say from his meeting with Ask Wellness was that they're looking for the city's support. And so my only attempt at compromise here was to, that the city supports their efforts through whatever, and not giving direction to our staff. Without precluding the staff from providing whatever assistance they may be able to provide and can answer the question, but it's just not, it's not saying that they have to do that. I don't know, but if that's...
That sounds more difficult.
Councilor Maslin, what I think is that we're missing the intent of this, but I'll leave it to you. Do you accept a compromise on this and wish to adapt, change the wording?
Your Worship, I'm looking at the wording and I'm reading it. The spirit of the motion was not to command staff to get busy and do this job for B.C. Housing and Ask Wellness. You're quite right, and Councilor Krog is quite right. You know, they can do this work, and they will. I guess they're looking over their shoulders, perhaps, when sometimes other agencies bring proposals to us and we turn them down. I think it might be better if we come up with a proposal together, that is collaborate. And that was the, that was the spirit of the expression, to work. Would it be possible to just put the word collaborate in there? Let council direct staff to collaborate with B.C. Housing? I mean, the intent is to try to put something, have something happen on the ground, and then, you know, not have to constantly keep coming back. So that if there's a spirit of doing it, of cooperation, it's more likely to be a sustainable action. Anyhow, Your Worship, I don't have any other suggestions for the wording other than that, to struggle.
Councilor Thompson, you seconded the motion. Would you think collaborate might help in terms of a better movement forward with this on council?
Well, I hear what's being said. My concern is that other members of council take issue with directing staff. And what I heard Councilor Maslin say earlier was that they were looking for the city's support, which is why I tried to make this a compromise resolution that the city supports that B.C. Housing and Ask Wellness have endeavored to find a basis for isolation, including hotel rooms or RV sites. I mean, I realize, I raise the court that the city do this. And perhaps with respect to the language of directing staff, we might add Duncan, I don't see him here.
Yeah.
A comment on that.
You know what, so we could beat up the language. At the end of the day, if council, sorry, through Your Worship, if council just, if the intent is that we'll support it, but you don't want work to invest any time in it, then that's what we'll do. So, whatever council's intent is, we can frame some language in a motion that captures that. If the concern is, we're going to dedicate staff time to this, and we don't want to dedicate staff time, then fair enough. We'll make sure we capture that. We just need to know what the intent is. You can vote on the intent. We'll make sure the language and the action follows that.
Okay, we have a few questions, we have a few hands up here, moving from Councilor Krog at the bottom up to Councilor Stutey. Councilor Krog.
Okay, yeah, just what Mr. Redfern was speaking to, actually. It could be considered nitpicky, but I've been sitting in that chair for probably 20 years, and I have seen where nitpicking went wrong because it wasn't done, right? So you have to be careful what you say, because it leads to things down the road. So, Councilor Thompson's statement was the perfect compromise. If the intent is that we support them in their actions, then that's what it should say. I support them looking for hotel rooms and RV spaces for isolation for COVID, right? I think everybody does. It's just that as long as our staff isn't getting sucked in for more than a few minutes, collaborate, to me means I say something, Chris says something. I run it by Chris again, and then he runs it by me. That's what a collaboration is, till you come to an answer, right? So, as long as we're not burning up staff time on something that's weak and support without.
Okay, and moving up to Councilor Stutey.
Yeah, I prefer just to treat them like everybody else. So, if they call and have a question that says zoning, I would expect appropriate staff to answer that question. Hey, is this zoning appropriate, whatever they want to do? Yes or no, right? Simple stuff like that. But in terms of action going above and beyond that, I actually don't see too much of our staff that actually offer at this point. You know, I would just see them come back to us, here's our three proposals, kind of, if it would be the best, and just go put it out.
Thank you, and Councilor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm more with Councilor Stutey than anything, is the idea that if it's hotel rooms and RV sites, that's between this Ask Wellness and the proprietor, you know? The words do matter to me. Identify is definitely different than blessings or approval. Support, yeah, kind of open-ended, but if the fellow that our CAO talked to wanted our blessings, I have a problem with that. I think, again, with Councilor Stutey, if they want to set something up for the hotel or RV site, you know, it's just a communication to us to say, hey, you know, this is what we're planning. Does it fit with your zoning and whatnot? And it's between those two entities. Government, or at least our level of government, doesn't have to get involved with this. Yeah, approval, blessings, those words scare me. Identify and support, as you probably know, I don't have a problem doing more work on staff.
And Councilor Corley.
Okay, just to make it quick, I do believe it's from whatever the wellness thing is, between the proprietors or the owners of the appropriate properties. I don't have an issue saying that I support their efforts in communicating and consulting with the owners of whatever properties they're looking at. I don't want to waste any staff time doing that. And they want to come with a proposal, say this is what our choices are, then we can make a decision. Or otherwise, just go and go talk to the various caprants or hotels. That's not our job, nor is it our staff's. And I do believe that that should be the way it is.
Okay, and I think that we're playing word games here and that we're missing the whole spirit of what's been put in front of us. And that we can trust that our CAO is going to understand that with our reluctance to do things for them, we should, in every way we can, be supportive and trying to work with them. So, I will support the motion, and I'm going to call the question at this point. We have no further hands up. And so, the question on the floor, seconded by Councilor Thompson, is that we accept this motion and move forward with directing staff to work with, and that we leave it up to our CAO to apply certain reasonable standards in terms of when it's appropriate to come back to council if it looks like it's going to be any kind of a major use of staff resources to accomplish what is in the plan.
Please, yes, would you please restate the motion, please? The motion is...
As written, there are no changes to that.
Yeah, there is changes.
As written.
Well, there was an earlier change, Kevin accepted.
Kevin, there was an earlier change, Kevin didn't read it.
They didn't vote on making the change.
Oh, sorry.
Did not.
They did not vote, my mistake.
They didn't vote on the change.
There was a question of the use of the word collaboration, which I asked Councilor Thompson if the seconder, she did not agree. So I see them without any modifications now on the table. And if it will be modified, Councilor Maslin makes the motion.
With respect, Your Worship, I used the word support and not directing staff, and I believe that was acceptable.
Councilor Maslin, ensure motion.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. First off, I do want to point that it was general council agreement to delete the word spaces. And earlier I did reword it, so it's quite exactly as written already. And Your Worship, I would really like to be able to pass a motion unanimously, or at least a majority of council can accept. And because I think it's really important that if anything is going to happen... And because I think it's really important that if anything is going to happen, we pull it, we're at least pulling it in the same direction. And from listening to council's advice about the word "support," can we just perhaps, with permission from my second, or help if I can reword it this way, that council "support" B C Housing and Ask Wellness in identifying spaces for isolation purposes, including hotel rooms or commercial sites, sorry.
I've screwed up my own proposal.
That council "support" B C Housing and Ask Wellness in identifying hotel rooms and commercial RV sites for isolation purposes. And the city's role strictly to identify possible lodging opportunities and the current locations of unsheltered residents in the community. I hear council's concern about taking, boy, I certainly know that our staff is well, is pressed to the help, as we all are in this time of crisis. We're trying our best not to make the crisis worse. And the way that we do that is we collaborate with our partners. And although the word "collaborate" is not in the rewording, it's certainly in the spirit of it. Thank you, Your Worship.
Counselor Thompson, we have some suggestions here from Counselor Moslin. One that we could lean on was maybe to drop "spaces." But in terms of the other words at the beginning of that, "to work with," "to support," I think those are the two choices. You're the second on this.
Yes, and I'm also going to suggest respectfully that the final part, that the city's role is certainly to identify because we've taken that out. And so the motion would be very succinct in that council "support" B C Housing and Aswellis in the identification of spaces for isolation, including hotel rooms or commercial RVs.
Without the word "spaces." Moving on.
Yes, we did. Yes. And I think I heard Counselor Thompson suggesting just drop the second part.
Yeah. Because, again, we're identifying, and we didn't want to do that.
Yes, okay. As long as we're working with them, and we're not going to try to keep secrets.
No, we're supporting them. We give them our support, but we're not directing staff to do anything of a gravity with them as they may with anybody else.
Yes, and our staff is well-positioned to be able to collaborate and make their project successful, just like they would any private developer's project.
Okay, muddy water.
Yeah, I don't want a muddy water, sure.
We are already. Kevin, do you have anything close to a motion on that?
So I believe we do with Counselor Thompson's suggestion to strike the second section. What I've got is that council "support" B C Housing and Ask Wellness in identifying hotel rooms or commercial RV sites for isolation purposes. Stop.
Drop, period. Is that your motion, Counselor Moslin?
Yeah, if that's agreeable to my second, then I put that on the floor.
Counselor Thompson.
Yes, this is agreeable.
Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Do we have any opposition here? I didn't see any hands. Counselor Krog, did you vote against it?
Ah, no, I did not. I abstained, which was a vote in favor.
Yes. Okay, then we have a unanimous vote?
Close.
I don't see an opposition hand up.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay, and Counselor Moslin, on to your second motion, which is to work with again to support the installation of washing stations at no cost to the city next to temporary porta potty site.
You know what, Your Worship, I might have to take the word for it. I've got so many windows open on my machine.
Need to raise that one to you?
Sure.
That council direct staff to work with B C Housing and Ask Wellness to provide hand washing stations at no cost to the city next to the temporary porta potties that council has provided in response to the COVID-19 epidemic. Counselor Moslin makes that motion?
Yes, Your Worship, let's get it started then.
And the second for that one?
Father, who's second up?
Counselor Thompson. An opening for questions. Minister Krog, does his hand up?
Yeah, just a quick won't be that just, again, the directing staff. Right? As opposed to if they want, if we put up a porta potty and they want to put a wash station behind it, that's awesome. But why are we telling staff to? So at last, I'm missing something.
Yeah, Your Worship. Yeah, Your Worship, I think it will probably take some on-the-ground staff work in order to safely assemble these portable hand washing stations, sanitation stations. Unfortunately, Mayor, I can't, I don't even know what those stations look like or how big they are, or how difficult it will take them to clear. What it will mean is it will take some group to work, they'll have to work together.
Yeah, Counselor Thompson, next. You're muted.
I support the motion as it's written. I don't think that they can install or put these hand washing stations without working directly with our staff. So they would probably work through Duncan, who then direct them to Morris or whoever. But they can't do it without the city's involvement enough.
Counselor Krog?
Yeah, what's confusing me is like when Counselor Moslin said, oh, to help put them together, right? So that's putting all the pieces together. So it almost sounds like he's talking about city works, assembling these things. There is a group, they're named in everything. Ask Wellness and B C Housing are the ones that are doing it. They're the ones that are paying for it. So yes, if they need us to say, can we put one next to your porta potty at Gyro or Riverside, whatever? Yeah, that's fine, staff can say yeah, right? And if they need a staff member to go out and look at it, because it's something different than the norm, that makes sense. But we're almost like taking in stuff just for the sake of taking in stuff.
I thought we were working together to try and help a crisis situation here, but correct me if I'm wrong.
You're wrong.
I would like to, I would like to hold up to Mr. Redfern to comment. Do you expect it would be a major staff outlay here in terms of time and resources to work with B C Housing in establishing these washing stations?
So through your worship, my understanding is they need us to indicate where our porta potties are, and they will hire a contractor. I believe they're going to rent these units, and they'll hire a contractor to drop them off. And the one thing we may do is we may chain them to our porta potties so that, you know, somebody doesn't steal them because they're smaller units. But that would be the extent of it.
Thank you. And then Counselor Krog again.
Okay. My only comment would be that we are making an assumption those porta potties are going to be used by a certain segment of the population. And I would suggest respectfully that there may be others in the community that need to help themselves with those facilities as well. And with the COVID-19 and the underhand washing directions, we need to do that.
Thank you, and Counselor Krog.
Yeah, this will be my last kick at the body cam. Okay, when council makes motions and brings them forward, can we have the C A O speak before we get into a 15-minute argument about the wording? Because the last thing that Duncan said made sense and would have ended the conversation if he had have said that first, rather than the motion, which lays out all kinds of possibilities. So yeah, I support what Duncan said. The same.
And the motion is on the floor. Are we ready for a call to this motion?
Is it? Yeah, okay, never mind.
It's as written, there are no changes to it? All those in favor? And opposed? Was there an opposition again? Hands that are not going up at the same time. Is that a unanimous support?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Moslin, for those two. And further, Counselor Moslin, still your floor.
It is? Why, I don't have...
Well, you've done your two motions, and I will...
I've had the floor far too long, Your Worship, my colleagues.
Your Worship, just a quick question. Does council want to pass a resolution for that request to the SAG committee regarding getting some additional information? Or are you content with just that general direction to Counselor Moslin?
And what question to the SAG committee was that Duncan?
Just asking for an update, or sorry, from Boundary Family Services regarding the shelter and some of the statistics and getting some info on that. And I don't want to muddy it, but it's always stronger when it comes from all of council looking for some information.
Right, and Counselor Moslin, I heard that in previous discussions here. Counselor Moslin, you understand that that's a request from council for more information specifically from the providers?
I certainly do, Your Worship. And countless member reports are on the agenda.
Okay.
And they were quite enlightening from the last one because sometimes they were quite positive, there were quite positive things coming out of it. Anyhow, Your Worship, Boundary Family Support Services is going to make it, give us an update at the next Social Services Advisory Group. Although Mr. Grant won't be here. A representative from the Boundary Family Support Services will be here. And we certainly will make the request. And I believe B C Housing also really craves those numbers too, Your Worship. That is, how many guests, what was the average, all that sort of thing. That kind of gap is very important, and I believe it is gathered too. So hopefully, eventually, we will get it. Thank you.
And you do an excellent job on the minutes, and I want to thank Counselor Thompson, who's going to chair the next meeting of the SAG.
If I might just interject here for a moment. With regard to the meeting on Wednesday, I believe the city posted through our Zoom capability to my director now.
I think we all agreed on that some months ago when the first one was going to be Zoomed. So yeah, that's still stamped.
So I would like to suggest that the invitation be sent to all members of council. And if members of council want to participate, they would be able to participate. But if they want to Zoom in and observe, they might be more comfortable in getting the information that they're looking for.
Yeah, that is a great invitation.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. And as soon as I get the Zoom minute meeting numbers, I will put out that invitation, like I did last time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Have we concluded this discussion? Counselor, can I have a motion to accept council report? Counselor Corley, Counselor Krog, all those in here. All right, moving down to staff recommendations for the city. The first item is the electrical vehicle charger usage. And so we have more details in this report, and I wonder if Mr. Redfern has any comments on that.
So I will, through your worship, we'll let Daniel take the lead on this one.
Sure, thank you. So I believe I sent a couple of emails to council in the winter months regarding our electrical charger out here outside the all being broken. It was just replaced and installed on Friday. So the new one is in now. I don't know if the sign is still up and it's out of order, or if everything is up and running, but we're actually there, so that's some good news. Overall, I wanted to highlight to council that it seems, A, the usage is up for sure. So the electrical chargers are definitely being used more than in 2015 when the first one was installed. So that's a positive sign. At the same time, though, the initial intent of council was to use it for an economic development tool to basically allow people to stop and charge their vehicles here and shop at the same time in our downtown core, eat at our restaurants, and provide that kind of benefit to the community indirectly through allowing free charging. It seems nowadays that may not be happening because it's repeatedly the same vehicles charging, which doesn't indicate necessarily that these are travelers coming through town, but rather residents of the area, or maybe Christina Lake or Greenwood that work in town here. That wasn't the intent. So we're bringing this back to council simply to say, hey, council, we'd like to educate the public a little bit more. It's Mr. Redfern's heavy on that. He believes education first, and engineering, and then enforcement. So let's try it with a signage maybe and get something up for the next couple of months to see if that'll help to deter the local residents to charge there, and rather leaving those spaces available to the traveling public. And then after that, if that doesn't work out, we would bring a report back to council. That's the intent behind the report, to get council up to speed on what's going on here.
Okay, we have a couple of motions, and we should probably get them on the floor before we go too much further. But we'll start with Counselor Zelinski, and then let's try to get one of the first motion up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Usually, in a professional organization like ourselves, to clarify the intent, it'd be great to see this in a policy. Because I don't know what our intent is or where we are going. My assumption, again, is the charger that was replaced was at a cost to us, at a cost to all taxpayers. Just like the people flooding into that unit all this time were subsidized by all the taxpayers in the community. And I don't know if that was the intent or not. But if we put it in a policy, we can actually have something we can deal with and keep them all up to date. But that's my preference, is actually go forward with the policy. And if we should have a motion.
Okay, Counselor Thompson, go ahead.
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, how long does it take on average to recharge an electric vehicle?
So to fully, thank you, through the mayor. To fully charge a vehicle can take four to eight hours, depending on how large the battery capacity is. Most people always want to get a quick boost, like get an hour or two charging, which is enough to go shopping, and then basically head on to the next location where they're trying to head. Nowadays, technology has definitely improved. If we would have a Tesla Supercharger, for example, we could charge the vehicle in an hour. But we don't provide that type of charging, which is kind of on purpose. We want people to stay in shop, right? At the same time, the cars nowadays also, an hour charge can get you 200 kilometers at times. So you don't need to stay forever anymore. Again, technology has changed in the battery capacity and how they charge. It's anywhere in between them.
Okay, and again, just quickly, through your worship to Duncan, I would make an educated guess that once these two, if these two resolutions are passed and they're coming with a report back to council, that that would include a policy?
So through your worship, I guess I would want to unpack a little bit what you're looking for in a policy. in a policy, and I, and I make some assumptions, but I, I make the assumption that, that when counsel installed these in 2015 or 16, when those were installed, the intent, you know, it, it was known that they would be free. And so I would just want to know exactly what we're looking for in a, in a policy. So, I mean, typically policies govern, as we move forward with E V stations, uh, that policy would kind of dictate how and where and what they look like and whether, I guess, people pay for them. I'm just talking aloud right now. And I'd ask maybe Counselor Zalinski on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the first suggestion moving forward is that we initiate this education as suggested by motion number one. Can I have a mover for motion number one? Uh, to use social media and signage to educate the public. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Krog second. And further discussion on, uh, motion number one. Uh, Counselor Moslin and then Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you, your worship. I, I guess I, there's not too many city services that we offer for free. And, um, because if we did, it would quickly become a, a subpar service. And, uh, I, I'm in favor of educating the public, but I think my patience is running, is, is running out. I, I believe that we, we do want to, uh, nourish electric vehicles. I think the private enterprise is going to do that. Uh, only that we're going to see commercial charging stations, uh, take place soon. Um, and in fact, to encourage that, I, I would encourage counsel to consider charging for the service, you know, just to show that there is money in it. Thank you.
And I, I think that, uh, the motion number two basically is saying, let's evaluate the charging station usage and various other aspects of it. So that would fit nicely into an opportunity for us after that report comes back to make those kinds of decisions, Counselor Moslin. Um, and Counselor Zalinski was next.
Yes, to me, it still points to, uh, to a policy to start with. Uh, you know, we're, we're about launching these ideas around. But again, are we in competition with the private industry? Is it a commodity that we're selling? Uh, is it a, uh, economic development thing? How many are we going to have? Where are they going to be? Uh, how, how many are we going to replace over the years? You know, what, what do we expect the taxpayer to suck up? We, we have a list of several hours that they contribute so that somebody can drive their own personal vehicle. Um, we already have seen the result of this education or not. It's the half a dozen people that you could be able to knock on their door and say, hey, you know why this was actually put in? Um, I, I'm going to be voting against the two of them because I believe a policy.
Can I ask a question here, Daniel? Do, do we charge bicycles and scooters from these stations at all?
Uh, no, they, these are non-chargeable at this point, like that. The, the system is capable now because they're on the same, uh, from the same vendor to, to flip the switch in a way to, to make it chargeable. So anybody that wants to charge their, their devices on it can, can do so.
Okay, so that will come in further in the usage and planning part of the second motion.
So, and so through your worship, if, if counsel wants to look at a model where we charge, now would be the time to give us that direction before we go through the process of educating and, and working with the community to say it's for economic development. So if, if we're going down a different path than we have in the past, now would be a good time to give us some direction to bring back that model for you.
Do we have enough information at this point, Duncan, to do that? Or should we wait, be waiting for, um, more of a report in terms of usage levels and recommendations?
So, so through your worship, the information that was going to come back to you by the end of the summer was whether people were still parking there all day. As far as usage, I know that there's some information in the report. Um, it, it's really a principle. Do you want to provide this free service? And municipalities provide a lot of free services, whether it be playgrounds or splash parks or, you know, some provide arenas or pools at really subsidized rates. And it's really is this one that you want to provide is really the question right now. And the original tent intent was its economic development, and that's not working because people are, are parking in these spaces. We could try to correct that or we can go down a completely different path, but that, that's really up to counsel.
So what I understand, Mr. Redburn, is that, um, motion number one that's on the table doesn't make a lot of sense if we're going down that alternate path at this point.
Correct.
Uh, we need to give you that indication immediately.
Correct. Right now, motion number one is going down the path of this is for economic development purposes and we want to encourage people to park and shop.
Which, okay, counsel, um, we could remove that motion or we could defeat it. I can see Counselor Corlick and then Zalinski.
I think, I think people should be charged, bottom line. Uh, it's, it's obviously not working as an economic development thing. Eventually, the service station will have some charging, I, I think. And they're not going to give it away for free. And so we would be in direct competition and I just, I, I don't think I want to be paying for everybody's service. It may not be a lot of money, but you know, in the end, we already are paying for lots. So let's, let's just start doing it. Why mess around and say, we're thinking about doing this because you guys are abusing it? Forget that. Let's just start looking at putting in charges. Don't have to keep messing around for four or five months to make a decision. This is a pretty simple one.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Zalinski and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I believe that this service is in direct competition with the private industry. Uh, we have Petropan, which we have a business in town that is advertising across Canada charging stations. We have Kespa highlighting Grand Works as a place to, uh, charge. And if we are charging our regular residential rate, it's what it looks like from the charts we have, at the twelve cents per kilowatt hour, these private industries cannot, uh, try, charge that amount unless they want to lose money, I suppose. But I, I believe it's direct competition, competition with the private industry. And, um, I have no problem with the two that are there and let them go and fill their die, but, um, I don't think we see something that would.
Counselor Thompson? You muted.
Thank you, your worship. With the consent of the second, or I will withdraw that motion.
And do you want to make a second motion if we look at charging for the service?
Uh, I would be happy to do that. Um, who seconded my original motion?
Counselor Krog, I saw Krog. Who did? Sorry.
Counselor Krog.
Yeah.
So is he agreeable to the withdrawal of that motion?
Counselor Krog? Withdrawning of the motion? I think that's a yes with his hand up.
Hmm.
Okay, and to make the second motion then, if we consider, um, the, not consider, that we do charge for the service and that we ask that, uh, direction to be taken by our staff.
I'll make that one.
Right, I'm not framing it well here, but Duncan, maybe you could give us a motion here that would be a little more to the point of what you need here to go forward.
Sure, I'd ask Daniel. This is his report and he's looked at that, so I'll ask Daniel. Put him on the spot.
Okay.
Um, I, I drafted something quickly. I quickly wanted to address, uh, Counselor Zalinski though. The, uh, the flow network is, is its own network. Um, so we would be charging flow and flow would be charging their rates that are basically similar in other, in other areas. So we're, we're essentially supplying power to a, to a private business that is then doing the, the charging. Um, it's not, it's not us trying to compete with business. This is a standard that's happening throughout the province. So, uh, it's, it's not a bad model. It's not quite exactly, um, competing with, with private industry, I would say. So, um, but outside of that, um, I had that counsel instruct staff to enter into an agreement with the E V charger manufacturer, or we can put flow networks in there, uh, to charge for the usage and to amend necessary bylaws and policies if required.
Okay, and then Counselor Thompson, that made your need.
Um, yeah, I think it does, but just a quick clarification. Is that the charging station by the libraries? Um, pardon, are they, are they charging people that are, are, um, using that facility?
Uh, through the mayor, no. Currently, this is all, it's a city, city charger at the end. Um, I actually don't know where it came from, but there's a meter on it. But we're not, we're not charging or you don't have to pay it currently to, to fuel your vehicle.
So we're not charging flow to the electricity?
No. It's out.
Now it's not charging to use it.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So this motion would capture both of those E V stations?
Yes.
And, and so that motion would capture both? Um, and this is, this is where I inject that, that, just that moment of pause to say to counsel, you know, there is an opportunity to, to, to publish your intent and receive feedback. Or we can plow forward with this and get it done right away. And I always want to make sure you know what the alternatives are.
So counsel, do you want to go public with this and get feedback from the public before we actually initiate a charging system?
I think that's a good idea. Um, when is the next building listed, um, going to come up?
Mid-June. Mid-June.
Okay, so if we, um, if we, um, find out my motion to include a starting of July third.
Sure.
July third, um, that, that gives, we can publish our intention, uh, the publishing to get feedback. Uh, we can issue a press release or whatever.
Yep, and we could bring it back to a meeting in June.
Yeah, yeah, and like I wouldn't set a start date yet at this point, counselor. Um, I would, I would probably hold off until we get the agreements and things like that lined up and, and all the information together. Um, so, but we can publish a notice of intent for the time being in the newspaper and on, on Facebook, like, uh, similar to what we're doing for the, the regional, uh, area that outreach around the Raven Place, for example, of the, of the other items.
Okay, well, yeah, whatever.
Okay, so we've kind of taken your motion, Daniel. We've tacked on the idea that we go to the public with this as, as our intention?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we need a second for that motion? Counselor Corlick? Um, can I ask a question in terms of the capital cost of going to a charge, charge system?
Um, the devices are ready to go for it, as far as I understand it from our electrical department. So in theory, we need to get an agreement going and, uh, we can start charging hopefully.
So minimal capital cost?
Yeah, at this point, yes.
Okay. Counselor, you ready for this motion? This really replaces motion one and two that were coming forward on this matter.
Counsel, Counselor Zalinski has his hand up.
Uh, yeah, Counselor Zalinski.
Uh, just a suggestion. Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. If you do want to support this type of service, I would suggest that, uh, we create a separate electrical charging rate. And that's, that's one way that you can, uh, place more of these on, on the system. And, uh, make it viable without a capital cost, just a, a hurdle electrical. Good comment. Great.
An electrical comment. Okay, right, the question, counsel. All those in favor? Okay, is that unanimous, Counselor Moslin, Counselor Zalinski? You still voting against it? Okay. Um, all right, uh, we still, does that matter and totally change direction?
That's good.
However, that's the way democracy works. Um, and moving on.
Five-minute health break, please.
Certainly. Five-minute health break. We're coming up to financial statements. Twenty nineteen financial statements, and I will ask, uh, Mr. Redburn and Dean to introduce this.
So, Juliette, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, uh, we've completed our audit of the 2019 financial statements. Um, and what we need to do is, um, we have the auditors here, well, sort of here, I'm sure, uh, ready to do their presentation to counsel. Uh, the financial statements at this point are unaudited, they're draft. Uh, they need, uh, counsel's approval before the auditors can issue their audit final written audit report. So, and then, um, once that's done, um, we can submit them to the, to the province. And then I will be bringing them back, the audited financial statements, um, back from, been the so few reports in June for, for counsel approval of the audited financial statements.
All right, so welcome, Sylvia Birch.
Hello. Hello, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Um, okay, so I'm going to go over the financial statements. Um, I won't be too lengthy about it, but of course, if you have further questions, you can ask me. Um, if I cannot, I will refer to the chief financial officer. To start off with, I want to be clear that the financial statements are prepared by the city. They are prepared by the chief financial officer. Um, I, as auditors, we are looking at the underlying information to determine that it's struck accurately on the statements. And we are also making sure that these statements are presented in accordance with public sector accounting board standards. Uh, but the, the actual statements themselves are done by the, um, by the C F M. So, um, which is why I may hear how to explain some things, but all right, I'm going to go through them. Does that sound good?
Okay.
Uh, okay, so I'm going to go past the initial index and management report uh, to my auditor's report. Uh, so this is my big contribution to the actual printed financial statements itself. It gives the opinion, which is that the, uh, accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city of, at December 31st, 2019, and the results of its operations and cash flow for the year then ended. Then it goes on to, um, the text of what our opinion is based on, uh, what the responsibilities of management are, uh, which is to keep all the records and provide them to us and ensure that they are corrupt. Our responsibility as auditor is to go through our procedures according to auditing standards and in some cases verify accuracy, um, in some cases just book for supporting documentation. We do various procedures and methods to arrive at our opinion. So that is the extent of our opinion. And now we're on to the financial statements themselves. It starts with the, so it starts with the, um, statement of financial position, which is sort of equivalent to a balance sheet, uh, and it starts with the assets. So the cash figure at the top is all of the cash of the city. So this is not only what's sort of in the checking account for operations, but it's also the amounts that are held for reserve. So the capital reserves, all of those things are included in that $12 million amount as well as deferred development charges, you know, things that are, uh, determined specifically by bylaw. Um, so it's all of the cash. The receivables are primarily property taxes, um, grants receivable is in there, um, and then a smaller portion, which is just ongoing revenues. So, uh, a, a lot of it is utilities. Municipal financial authorities deposit, that's a requirement of the debt, uh, of M F A, that a certain amount of cash be deposited that they hold. Inventories for resale are, I believe that they're water meters or electrical meters, something like that. Julie, I can verify that?
That's all.
Not a lot of money, but it's up. And, sorry, also fuel, B R four fuel is in there as well. Land for resale is some land that's been held for a couple of years now. That's intended to be sold, and there is a lease agreement for some property on that is with, I believe that is the school district. Um, and then we have the liabilities, accounts payable, accrued liabilities, those are all current liabilities, being paid out, um, employee future benefits, there's some benefits that, uh, are set aside for, uh, post-employment and retirement. Deferred revenues are anything prepaid, so there's a fair portion of property taxes that are prepaid. Um, and that's where that sits, and sometimes utilities. Um, the temporary loans that were in place last year have now all been converted to long-term debt because the projects were finalized, so large capital projects were finalized. Those have now been converted to long-term debt. Development cost charges, those are done under, uh, provincial legislation and are required when you charge, uh, for development costs. They are set aside in separate funds and can only be spent on specific items, and that's not something that you as a council have the ability to change because it's determined by legislation. Repaid expenses, that's just things paid in advance, that includes any sort of deposits or down payments, anything. Inventory of parts and supplies, that's for public works, utilities, et cetera. Those are inventory for, for use in operation, and then the tangible capital assets. So, that was a little tour of the statement of financial position. Is, are there any questions on that? Do you want to wait till the end, or?
I don't see any questions coming up at this point, Sophia, you want to go ahead?
Okay, I'll move on. Um, the next statement is the statement of operations. So that's the revenues, the annual revenues and expenditures that have gone out. Um, the first category is taxation, property taxation, that's a big one for all cities. Sales of services is primarily utilities. There are some other things in there, but it's primarily electrical, and then some water, sewer, miscellaneous other. The other revenues are just that, there's just a lot of other little miscellaneous categories. Um, they include, I, I'm not even gonna say what they're gonna include, some, some insurance type expenditure, some miscellaneous expenditures. Government transfers, that includes all grants and funding that are received from other levels of government. So it's going to include things like the provincial government, um, annual funding that's received for operations. It's going to include all of the capital grants. Um, it's going to include, uh, emergency operation funding, R D K P, all of that. So that's a big category, and, um, it's so large this year in part because of flood recovery, but primarily because of the capital grants that were received during the year. Miscellaneous contributions, interest that's earned during the year. Um, and that's, that's the revenues of the current year. So again, very high because of specific things related to flood recovery and from capital grants mostly. The expenses... So these are grouped in areas rather than by object, which is, the object is what it is, whether it's wages or whatever. It's, it's in the general category, so we've got general government operations, protective services, disaster response and recovery, and you can see the large level of expense on that this year. That was, um, a lot of repairs and stuff, cleanup, environmental health services, public health and welfare, funding and development, there's increases there. Um, so those are all the various categories. The differences between those from the current year to the prior year, those questions are probably best answered by Juliette. If you have any questions on that, um, we're looking at very specific details, so. So the accumulated surplus, so the first category is the budget, the second category is the actual, um, and then there's, you, you can see some difference. The government transfers, um, the budgeting for the government transfers always includes a lot more capital grants than are actually received. Um, so basically your five-year plans include a lot of capital asset acquisitions and not all the grant funding comes through for them. So that budget is always higher than what you actually end up receiving. And the, the attached expenditures, um, are also lower. So, is that good? I'll carry on.
Yes, I see no questions at this point.
Okay, um, state, statement of changes in net financial assets is not very interesting. I'm just gonna kind of go by that one, that's usually the standard one. Um, statement of cash flow, again, this is just showing where things kind of go in and out and probably goes into more detail than is really needed or really of great interest. Uh, but you can see that a large amount was expended on capital transactions this year. So it was five point three, almost five point four million dollars was the acquisition of tangible capital assets. A lot of something out. Um, and financing transactions, that's just sort of the transition basically between the short-term and the long-term debt. Uh, so we're into the notes. They don't give a lot of details, they give some technical accounting details. They talk about the presentation, why it's done a certain way. Not gonna read through all of it, but we'll talk about a few areas. Um, so I'm gonna go down to note three, which is cash. Yep, it's way down there. Okay, so, so basically I mentioned in the beginning that that cash line, twelve million, was all the cash that the city has. You can see that actually the majority of it is spoken for. So the majority of it has been allotted into its categories, and, um, it is not sort of available for use in operations. The unrestricted cash is what is available for the ongoing operations. I'll add this on that a little bit more. Um, the receivables, again, note five is just the, the, um, details of what is owing, what categories, that's it. So, the, the utilities are a large portion of it, there's also monies due from other governments for grants. Other things. The, uh, I'm not gonna go through that reserve fund. Uh, so those are just funds that are set aside. Um, municipal financial authority debt reserve, that just explains the, the technical details of the MFA, um, funding. Complicated, okay, least receivable is the regional district of county boundary. Um, and it is ongoing, and it just talks about the interest of principal, count payable, crew liabilities, those are just details. Party future benefits just describes what type of benefits are, um, set aside for and how they're expensed and how they're paid out. Uh, deferred revenues are monies received that are for futures, so again, taxes, utilities, et cetera. Uh, and some ground funding. The temporary loans are done. Details of the deferred development costs, long-term debt, details on that. And, you know, over five years, what the required payments are. Details of the tangible capital assets and all the different categories. Note fifteen, I'm sticking by, note fifteen is those statutory reserves that have been set up. So that is where those monies are set aside. So that sort of describes when you're talking about cash, it is balancing against some of these statutory reserves. Um, details on property taxes, details on sales of services, where that is coming from. Uh, other revenues, where that funding is coming, where that revenue is coming from. So insurance recoveries was a large portion of that this year. Um, government transfers, the details of those, what's operated and what's capital. Budget versus accounting. Um, there is some, uh, discussion of contingent liabilities, so these are possible liabilities that could come up theoretically. They're not considered to be at great risk, but there is a disclosure requirement. Contractual obligations is monies that the city has committed to paying out over the next few years. So these are more significant contracts that cover over, uh, several years. Contingent assets are, um, revenues that, or agreements that are expected to result in future revenues once they're finalized. Contract, contractual rates are revenues that, um, will come in based on agreements. So these are agreements, multi-year agreements that are in place that result in revenue to the city. So there's disclosure of those, and then that, um, includes some grants that are still coming related to ongoing capital projects and, um, some operational funding. More disclosure. Um, there is a note that details the sort of accumulated impact of the flooding. Um, how the expenditures have been allocated over the last couple of years and the revenue stuff has come in and where they've come from, so that's all the details there. And then the last couple of schedules, there's a schedule of segmented information. That just shows all those groupings that appeared on the original statement of operations, broken down into their objects. So this is where you can see the total amount of wages, uh, the total amount of insurance, the total amount of professional and contract services and so forth. So it just shows the information in a different way, um, so that you can see where it's kind of coming from and going to. And then there's another schedule of capital assets. So that's, whoo, twenty-seven pages of financial statements, so. Anybody has any questions?
We have a Council Zelinski question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Sylvia, uh, I think this question's to you, Sylvia. Um, note, note twenty-two, uh, contaminated sites.
Yes.
There was nothing identified, and I was wondering where the slide pile fits into, uh, that type of note.
So this is kind of a weird, uh, or an interesting category. So again, this is very specifically set up by accounting standards. It only applies to sites that are not in use. So it would only apply to vacant properties, well, I guess it don't have to be vacant, but basically properties that are not being used for the operations of the city because the slide piles are in use and generate revenue. They do not fall into this category of contaminated sites.
It's a big case, you were not saying anything to fix up that place? Yeah, thanks very much.
Okay, further, Ms. Sylvia. Council, I don't see hands up there. What I'm looking for is a motion that council approves and accepts the twenty nineteen financial statement. Can we have that motion? Council Studley, and seconded by, I only have half the pictures here, Council Corr. And further discussion, questions for Sylvia? Um, um, Council Thompson's doing the hand thing.
Yeah. Um, are we approving or are we recommending that it go to the, um, uh, people on, um, on, um, twenty-two?
I see this as approving and accepting now.
Draft. The draft.
The draft, yeah.
The final will come back later.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just, through your worship, just process from Juliette, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that, um, we need council to approve these draft financial statements before the auditors can issue their audit report to us.
Okay, that's the motion on the table. Ready for the questions? All those in favor? And opposed? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much, Sylvia Birch.
Thank you.
Further statements on this from anyone? Hearing none, very much appreciate your attention in presenting this in person.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, council, and, um, moving further to requests arising, we have the issue of the pickleball court. But I understand that there have been provincial regulations, so I'll ask Duncan if he can clarify where we're at with this issue.
Sure, so, so through your worship, we've received, uh, well, in the discussion on Thursday, and then since then, we've received emails from the province saying, you know, essentially, we're working with the various organizations, um, for each sector to try and develop some best practices, policies and standards, and we're gonna get those back to you. Um, and further, on the Thursday announcement, something else that they kind of flagged, and it, and it's come up since, uh, your worship with yourself and Director Russell, is when it comes time to open our facilities, some coordination between the school district and the regional, regional district, so we don't have maybe a basketball court open on one side of the street, but across the street a tennis court is closed, or et cetera, or skateboard park. So, those are a couple of things that have come up just, just since the discussion on Thursday. You know, some coordination and some best practices from the province. So, I mean, council can, can move forward with this if, if you like. I think you'll get some questions from other groups saying, okay, how about, you know, the skateboard park or, or some of our other infrastructure that we have. Um, but, uh, that, that's kind of what the province had said on that Thursday call.
So council, uh, the question here is, do we want to do anything this ma, on this matter of wait until we get more direction and deadlines from the province? I'm not seeing too much, uh, Council Studley has his hand up.
Yeah, I think the province is pretty well covering it, like they are saying it will be the harvest middle of this month. So, I think that balls are already loaded, I think, if that drop should just be for staff to follow the provincial relationship anyway, so.
Council Thompson?
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Studley, uh, it was Studley, um, that, you know, I mean, we can receive this for information. Um, and staff can advise, perhaps, that, uh, council will be acting in accordance with provincial regulations.
Want to move to, uh, accept this for information?
Yes, I will.
And seconded by, Council Corlick, all those in favor? Okay, so, I, I don't think we need to spend too much more time on this. It looks like we're gonna be moving forward with these openings, and it makes total sense to do it, as Duncan mentioned, on a coordinated fashion with the rest of the school district and the regional district. All right, um, moving down to, uh, bylaws. We have the twenty-twenty tax rates, and, um, I would ask again, our CFO through Mr. Redfern to, uh, project this, put it on the table.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so, so we did introduce, um, this tax rates by law at the last meeting, and, uh, council had a point of discussion, uh, recommending, um, these particular rates and, um, and some alternative options, and these are the ones that, uh, council decided on. Uh, we don't have any extension for, except for, um, approval of the tax rates. We have to do this by May fifteen, so, uh, this is our last opportunity to do that. Um, and, um, other than that, yes, so, um, I just, um, want to mention that, um, the, um, the regional district and hospital taxes are, the, the rates are... the regional district and hospital taxes or the rates are pretty much set because we have municipal, sorry, provincial multiples that we have to use in the calculations.
Okay, can I have a motion for the first three readings of the bylaw number 2072 tax rate? Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corlick. Further discussion on this is readings, first three reading. All those in favor? Opposed? No opposition? And that is passed. And the second item is that we give final reading to the 2020 tax rate, 2072. Have a motion for final reading. Counselor Thompson and Counselor Corlick. This is how they do things at the regional district, so it does streamline in part of it.
Counselor Zelinski has the hand up, I don't think you have a question.
Yes, I do now, Counselor Zelinski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, if I've got this right, as far as any tax breaks for our community and whatnot, we're stuck with the timeline from the province as far as taxes are due. The legislation states that there is a penalty, I believe it's 10% on taxes at a certain gate, unless municipality has a different method. And we don't have a different method, so we're kind of stuck with legislation we have. Do I have that correct?
Let me have it.
So through your worship, for the most part, other than the province has implemented some of their own tax break strategies, in particular around deadlines and rates for classes.
Four through eight.
Four through eight. And also have implemented no late penalties on those classes as well until.
Until October.
Until October. So there are, there has been a waiver of late penalties, but only for those classes four through eight. And not on residential or utilities or the first three, I guess. So for the most part, Counselor Zelinski, yes, other than what the province has done.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And no further, hands up, are you ready for the motion? This is final reading of the 2020 tax rate bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed? No opposition? Thank you very much, counsel. Right. We are at a point where we are asking, is released from the public or media? Did we miss here?
Nothing, less says nothing.
Hey, excuse me, Ms. Mayor, can I address item 12 on the agenda?
Release from in camera, yes, Counselor Zelinski.
Thank you very much. So I asked, someone asked me a reasonable question and I didn't have an answer. So these items that are released from in camera, which as everyone knows, we have a lot of in-camera meetings, where can the public look at these items that are released from in camera?
Through your worship, they're not consolidated, right?
Well, we try to put it right there when it's like a larger release.
Yeah, so they're not consolidated, they show up on the next meeting after they've been released, essentially.
Yeah, we try.
Yeah. So that's something that we need to do some work on is cleaning up our in-camera and released items and consolidating some of those items so people can see them. So for now, they'll show up on the agendas as we move forward, we're gonna make that a little easier.
Okay, so people will find it in our next week's agenda package as it's being released, correct?
Yeah, and it all depends if it's like a full report that's being released or just a resolution. So it makes it easier for us if it's the full report because then we can just attach it. If it's something specifically dedicated, like just a resolution or a table of something, it makes it a little more tricky for us, definitely more time-consuming, right, to get it ready. And a two-week deadline is sometimes pretty tight.
It's a week.
Yeah, it's really not easy.
Like your recommendation would be an improvement in terms of our recognizing things flowing from in camera.
Yeah, we need, we have a bit of work that we need to do on that and that's one of the things, first things Daniel identified to me when I got here. Somehow we need to come up with a strategy to get these things out a little quicker and a little just easier, I guess accessible, I think was the word that you used. So we are definitely working on it, it's not great right now, but we're gonna improve it.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're down to asking for the in-camera resolution, section, section 90. Can I have that motion going next? And I'm seeing no hands. Oh, no hands. Counselor Crawford, Counselor Zelinski. All those in favor? All right, I've been great while we prepare for in camera.